All right, we're ready? All right, we'll call this meeting in order. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. First thing is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as provided.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the April eighth meeting and April fifteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And is that for both of them?
That's for both, yeah.
Yes, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Plan approval, BROS, County ninety one oh seven, eight J dash ninety. Brad, you're gonna have all kinds of stuff this morning, it looks like.
This is for a bridge project on hundred and eightieth over Little Soap Creek. Consultants, uh, Callan Burns prepared the plans for this. It is planned for an August letting, so this is, um, signing off, by the board and myself to, um, have the plans go through that letting procedure. Relatively straight straightforward project.
Do you have the dates on this?
The, uh, the letting would be in August, um, the earliest they could get started on it would probably be, October. It it's really one of those things where we will give a contractor the flexibility of doing winter work.
When they can start.
To get, uh, um, best pricing available.
All right, so we got a bridge project. Need a motion.
I'll make it.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That two thousand twenty-six county five-year program. There's a lot of paper, so if you just wanna highlight.
Well, probably really the highlights would be, uh, process of going through reconstruction on old thirty-four, uh, eighty-sixth.
Eighty-seven.
West of Atumla to the county line. It's gonna be about a three-year process, beginning this, uh, this summer with, uh, hundred and seventy-second construction. New access point to Highway thirty-four, placing, um, in, uh, sixty-third. One sixty-third. Um, it's a, uh, project that will go up north of the current, um, old thirty-four alignment. Tying in, uh, to the access to the east to the Buckeye Terminal and, um, coordinating with the railroad to allow their operations to move further west. We will have a series of projects working on culvert extensions first and then repaving the road to conclude it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we got a forty-seven Culverston, is that right, something like that?
Somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood.
We had to widen the road two feet on each side.
Right, uh, so we'll be replacing some culverts that are in poor condition. Um, the ones that, uh, are structurally stable but still have some leakage problems, we'd be doing liners on those. And then others will just be extended as is, depending on condition. Beyond that, we have a number of bridge replacements. Project spread throughout the county over the five-year process. We have a map available for anyone that wants to take a look at the details.
Do you wanna see that map, Chad?
I'm gonna say just, uh, number of projects throughout the county, uh, most of them are projects that were in some shape or form in the, uh, five-year plan previously, um, but we really have added very little. Spread out the projects from the, what was the four-year? Looking at the upcoming four years, put it over five years from a budgetary, um, concern.
All right, uh, any updates on hundred and seventy-second?
We're waiting for the DOT final comments on the report regarding the intersection with US thirty-four. Don't see anything there that would, uh, slow the project down or change the concept that we have. Otherwise, we're, we're looking at a couple of at-grade closures, uh, to help finance the project.
We just gotta coordinate that with the, uh, to we can time it different when we need the money.
We're really waiting to get that DOT approval on the, um, report for the intersection before we can finalize anything. We have proceeded with some, design development at this point, but as far as being able to put anything onto a set of plans and call it final, we really have to wait for that DOT approval.
Yep, I know you had a meeting with the landowner and everything's good there too.
Yeah, we're making some adjustments based on the feedback that we got from them, but, it's, uh, you know, typical fast-track type of procedure, but we're trying to get everyone involved, uh, input before we get too far down the road.
And just to remind everybody, this will be a brand-new road. Be west of jet fuel, rocket fuels there to access the fuel depot.
Brad, has the railroad been in touch with you lately? It seems like they were pushing, but then all of a sudden, we haven't heard much from them.
And while they're aware that we're waiting on that DOT approval before we can take another official step. Can I say, we're still working on design while we wait on things that we, um, are confident in.
And officially, Brian, they, they backed off a year to coordinate with us.
So we've got a little breathing room, but not much.
Right, um, is the DOT working on any turn lanes on thirty-four?
That was part evaluated as a part of that report, um. They were looking at a westbound right turn lane. Uh, also the potential for an eastbound left turn lane at the side, although the numbers don't quite justify it at this point. Really, those improvements, uh, were both, um, essentially relocated from the previous intersection on the edge of town. With the traffic being shifted out this direction.
Sure.
But it's more of a DOT corridor improvement. It would be a part of a super-two approach that they've talked about. So it, it's a matter of determining where the, responsible party would be as part of paying for that, and at this point, we're convinced that's the DOT's corridor.
I am convinced.
But we do still need to allow for it in our design.
Right, sure. Thank you. All right. Motion to accept the five-year program?
I'll move to accept the five-year program.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, fiscal year twenty-six secondary roads budget.
And this should just be a mirror of, uh,
What we did before.
The county's budget from, from the auditor. DOT has made a preliminary approval of it, so it's just back for the final board approval of the document.
I'll move to approve if we're ready.
Yep, we are. All those in favor?
Aye.
County five-year program resolution, zero point four.
And this is a, an amendment, uh, basically to correct an issue at the Service Bureau. They, uh, had some, uh, technical issues where it was pulling up old information and putting different project numbers into the, um, program. We need to get these done so we can get our five-year plan approved through the DOT.
Right, that's, this is what you told us about last time, that it'd be fixed, so.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Apples, Waplo County Engineer Agreement, fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And it's already been approved through Apples County, correct?
They did that a couple of weeks ago, um, and then, uh, approved the base agreement for, um, Apples County yesterday.
All right.
So I have a couple of questions on this contract. You got a two percent increase in Apples County, correct?
Yes.
So your base salary right now in Apples County is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, correct?
Currently, approximately.
One thirty-five, two point five. I have a copy of the contract. So, way I understand this is it's one point two five times.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And I don't have an issue with that, but when we, when, when Apples County spends us an invoice, can you have them break that down?
I haven't looked at, and we do have a new office manager there, so I do, I do need to review that process with their.
Okay, so we're being billed for the payroll, obviously, and they do have just a line item for payroll and a line item for benefits. Can you have them break that benefit? The benefits down?
Okay, sure. I don't know why we couldn't do that.
Okay, and then I also have an issue with a thousand dollars. Right now, he's getting paid five hundred dollars a month for, what is it, administrator fees, and that says a thousand dollars in it. What are those fees for?
It's the travel time is what's in the contract.
But we pay for travel time already. According to the contract.
As I recall, as we were negotiating that, it was really somewhat of a way the deal was put together. Um, originally, it was to include the thousand dollar per month.
Right, it was pre-negotiated with the previous board. There would be five hundred the first year, and it would go up to a thousand the second year, so.
Actually, this one, the original one says seven fifty on it, but I have.
Yeah, that, well, that's, is that the true copy or the one I gave you?
That's the one that gave me.
Yeah, that was, I don't have the actual true one.
That's why I couldn't come up with the whole number, because it's not a percentage. Doesn't count. It's not one point two five percent, it's just one point two five times.
Yeah, so that, that was just my start page that I printed off for you of different.
When the, when he originally came over here.
Right, different options we were looking at. And that's where he negotiated with us before.
So can, can it be clarified what the additional thousand dollars a month is for? We're already paying for travel time, we pay for health insurance, dental. What is that thousand dollars for?
Well, I think the health and dental is part of the benefits from.
Correct.
Apples County.
Correct. We pay, we pay sixty percent of that.
I think it's just for the additional duties.
But we're paying sixty percent of the wages.
Right, but we're paying additional duties for him to do two counties. Is that basically what it is?
Yeah, I think it was really just, um, making up the difference so that the, to make the agreement work for all parties involved. Essentially, the one point two five was lo- less, uh, salary than, than what I was willing to accept to do the work.
Yeah, cuz the original, he wanted one point five, I think, right? It was one point five and one point four, and we negotiated down. Cuz I know he started out higher on that.
Yeah, it was up to thirty-two hundred dollars a month.
Right, and his, Apples Board had different numbers to begin with too, so that was all negotiated through.
So do you have an issue with it staying at the five hundred dollars?
Yes. It was, the initial negotiation was a thousand dollars last year, and then it was, um, cut back to five hundred with the understanding that it would go to a, a thousand this year. So, I guess that was the, um.
And then I think the contract needs to specifically state that it's the one point two five time of his base pay. Because his base pay, according to his contract in Apples County, is one thirty-five, two twenty-five.
If I remember, the attorneys took that out, cuz I, we had that in there initially. And I don't remember the exact.
It does say his base salary in here, but when you go back to Apples County, it, his base salary is one thirty-five, two twenty-five.
And I don't reme- yeah.
There's some confusion out there in the public that it needs to be clarified.
But there was some legal reason they took that out. You remember what it was?
No.
Cuz on the original one, that's actually in there, that one point, point two five. And our, our HR attorney and their county attorney both took it out. And I'm not an attorney, so I don't know why.
Neither am I, but it's not, it's not clear.
But I know they took it out for a reason, so. You remember why?
No, I don't. And I'm okay going ahead with it, but we do have some time, probably cuz this doesn't take effect until July first, is that correct?
Correct.
The time period's starting in July.
But if we make any proposed changes, it probably has to go back to Apples County for approval too, so that could take some time.
Yep, and like I say, they've already approved it, so.
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
But Carrie, do you think you need more clarification before we go ahead, or what would you prefer?
Are you not gonna sign the contract if you don't give a thousand dollars a month?
I don't know.
And where are we looking at another engineer to root to replace Brad when he retires?
That's, he's working on that, that's part of his deal. Where he's.
The last conversation that we had, you have not been looking.
Have not yet. I think the timeframe that we're looking at, this, this covers a.
Two-year.
Two-year period. I would like to have an overlap of, six months or so from a incoming engineer. Um, the more, the better. You know, it's much of what we do is on an annual cycle, so, you know, budgeting is especially a in-depth process that, the more exposure a new person has, that's better. But if you happen to hire an engineer from, uh, an existing county engineer, another county to come in, um, would not be quite as critical, but, um, understanding of how it is done in this county is, is always beneficial. That's why I think, you know, a, a six-month period would kind of be a target as far as an overlap. And as of right now, my timeframe for retirement is roughly that two-year process, so, it's definitely time to start thinking about a procedure. Advertisement probably wouldn't be for, if that was the timeframe that the board wanted to follow, uh, would probably be, about a year from now, just to start think, seriously thinking about that. But the transition plan is something we should be working on all, all the way. As we've talked about, some internal department, uh, changes coming up with other retirements, but, um.
I would also like to have on the table the option of having a shared engineer also. I think this has actually worked out quite well for us to have shared.
It's always an option.
Yes.
You know, we've gotta have, um, willing engineer, willing other.
Right.
Uh, board and good cooperation with internally in both departments. So far, we've got that, but.
Yes, thank you.
And although we don't get you a hundred percent of the time, you are a hundred percent available on the phone. And we are saving six, roughly around sixty grand.
Yes. And I'm okay moving ahead with a motion to accept the engineer agreement.
We have a motion to accept. I'll second it then. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Next is the homestead disallowance. Resolution fifteen dash two zero two five, payable two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Is this one of the new homestead that the state's sticking us with? Or is this one of the old ones? Motion for the homestead disallowance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Like total of what, seven residents? Those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution sixteen two zero two five military disallows for two thousand twenty-four, payable twenty-five, twenty-six. Okay, so we got two disallowances.
I'll move to accept the two military disallowances.
I'll second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, resolution seventeen dash two zero two five, declare emergency medical service to be essential service in Waplo County, Iowa. As authorized by Iowa Code Section four two two D point one, this will be the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second, but let's also ask for any discussion.
Comments?
Yes.
Mister Political, you're here to be the political. Do you have any comments? Probably don't have any. Anybody have any questions for Mister Holcomb?
Just a reminder, there is a meeting on April twenty-ninth at Bridgeview at five thirty.
All right, we have no comments. We need a motion. We already did, so all those in favor?
Aye.
For a second reading. Transfer funds from Fund O two supplemental to Fund eighty-five Employee Health Fund. Amounted, what's two hundred? Two hundred thousand?
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's some memories for you, Mister Holcomb. Elliot Oil. Sixty-three BP cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Prove funding between the DOT and Waplo County for Bridge one twenty-four project. Yeah, I assume this is a whole different bridge.
It's actually the same bridge.
Oh, the same one, okay.
Estimated preliminary cost is, uh, correlated with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, funding, um, that is in the agreement. Uh, this will be hundred percent, um, funded through the DOT, um, as far as eligible costs are concerned. We don't expect there to be anything ineligible, so, um, it, uh, should go through routinely.
All right, any questions on the bridge?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wabash Bridge Discussion.
And I'll talk on this, if that's okay?
No, that's fine.
Okay, um, we've continued to do some research on the Wabash Bridge based on the request that the Trails Council brought to us. And I think today, since it says discussion, we will discuss it, and then we'll put it on the agenda for next time we meet, if we're gonna proceed. At this point, here, my thought is, is that, um, there's an engineering report from two oh six that we've taken a look at, and thanks to, uh, Billene White for, putting that in front of us and answering our questions, um, I would like to suggest that we, do a little bit more re- research with, uh, the structure, and I've talked to Brad about this and what might, might follow up with that. But on the other hand, um, what I'm thinking at this point is that there are some, some issues, but, the issues, and I could point those out, one of them was, was the idea that there was a collapse in nineteen eighty, and that would question the, the whole structure, but that collapse apparently was not due to the bridge itself, it was due to the, the train or the track itself. And so that's probably not the, the biggest issue that, that there is out there. So my thought would be to propose that we allow the Trail Council to go ahead with the understanding that, the bridge could fail or we could have to close it at any time, which means putting any money into it would be a, a little bit of a waste. But if they're willing to take that risk and, and risk, the, the bridge being closed because it's deficient in some way, then I, I, I'm at a point where I don't see any problem with that. But it, it is a little bit concerning because we, we have to, as supervisors, we have to consider the risk to the public and, and, uh, that type of potential, so. My thought is, we could go ahead next time with a motion to allow the Trails Council to go ahead. If the Trail Council is understanding and willing to take that risk. And we have a couple of people from the Trails Council here, so we can open it up to other discussion.
Any comment from the Trails Committee? You're used to talking in a microphone.
Okay. Just to comment a little bit further on the, study that was done back in two thousand six. And it was done by, uh, Burns and Associates. And that's been kind of something that's been used to determine the, where the bridge stands, safety-wise. And I, and you've brought this up, and I, I just want to underscore again, several times in this study, they didn't turn it into the, Waplo County Engineer in September two, uh, fifth, two thousand six. They make mention of the span that fell into the river. And they make conclusions in this report. They didn't know otherwise. I mean, this is the best that they had at the time. They thought that, um, because this section fell into the river, that the, the bridge was deficient. So their conclusion, as you go through this sur- uh, survey that they did on the bridge, makes it sound as if other sections would be in that same condition. But in factual, but in matter of fact, that, uh, train was going through, and it derailed, whether because of the track or because of a deficiency in the car. And when it derailed, it took the section, that section into the river. It wasn't that the section of the bridge failed. The train derailed. And there was enough momentum going with that. It just took, took that section of the bridge with it. So I think as you look at this, we'd hope that you, consider some of the other points they made in this. Uh, for instance, the ultrasonic test didn't detect any deficiencies. The magnetic practical particle. Particle test did not detect any deficiencies. And they were talking about the cracked wells, but they were at non-critical locations. Then they go under the masonry substructure, which they think was on bedrock, and it probably is at that point. And then they suggest in an older one, when they come to their conclusions, that some repair would need to be made on the base piers. Uh, I don't know if you call it tuck pointing at that point, or what it would be called, stabilize those piers. Stabilize those piers to keep them in good, good repair. And then there are rollers. On those piers, so as the bridge heats up during the year in the summer and gets hot, that bridge is seven hundred some foot, foot long. It moves, and that's the way it was designed, it was designed to move with those rollers. Those rollers, and it does move, you can see on the piers, you can see where it moves all the time. But those rollers probably need some attention or replacement. And we'd had at some point, some gentleman from Eldon come through and said, that's the work he did, he'd be glad to. Build us some new rollers to put on that, so I, I guess we'd ask, if it's something we could consider for. Future use of the bridge to look at some of this maintenance that they say. Would be beneficial to prolonging the life of the bridge. But our, our conclusion as we've worked with this bridge is that. The safety aspects that maybe this report makes it sound like exist really aren't there. So we do want to proceed, and I'll have, I think Kim, Bella come up too. Okay, cause she's been working grants for this project.
I'll just echo what Fred said, um. You know, we've, you know, we're not engineers either, but, um. You know, we had an engineer that was part of our team when we did the original decking in two thousand and seven. Um, put together the trust system that we now have, the trust system actually sits on the, the steel beams that run across the bridge. So nothing's sitting on the original. Railroad ties, and the railroad ties, I mean, they're, they have failed, when we did the redecking project last year. It was evident that, you know, that those are crumbling and, and, um, but not, we have no, no structure that actually sits on those. Railroad ties, everything sits on the metal beams, the steel beams that go across, and, um. And I know that when we did the connection project, after your new construction was done on the south approach. The engineer commented about the integrity of the steel beams, because he, they had to take the little connector beams off. And they reset those for us before we could put that connection back on, and, um, and he said that, that he was impressed with, um. With the overall quality of that, and. While he couldn't, something in writing to talk about the integrity of the bridge. He said his, he would have no qualms having his family walk across the bridge at any time, so. We're hopeful that, that bridge will, um, and as Fred said, you know, we can take a look at some of those things that will help us. To prolong the life of the bridge, you know, looking at tuck pointing. Looking at replacing the rollers, and those are things that we can fund through grant projects. Um, and we'd be willing to do that, because we think it's really important to preserve that iconic historic bridge. Um, for future pedestrian use, and I think that's the key, we're looking at pedestrian use, not vehicular use. Which is why we also just recently installed some, um, bollards. To prevent, because there has been some traffic going across, um, the bridge. Um, and I know there's even some horse traffic, we'd like to prevent that as well. Um, but I think as long as we preserve that bridge for its intended purpose. Um, I think it'll last for a long, you know, we hope it lasts for a long time.
And we did that original work in two thousand six, just as the Trails Council was getting started. And this bridge is what really kicked off our trail system, without it, we wouldn't be where we are today, so it's a very important part of our overall trails.
In between the Trails Council and possibly Brad, could we do some research on cost for the rollers and cost for tuck pointing? Just so we have that in mind?
Yeah, I would have to do some research on that, I'm not familiar with that. Type of work.
Right.
In two thousand seven, there was actually a paper from. To the original board and the auditor, or the suit, the engineer is supposed to inspect it. On a regular monthly basis. Which I'm assuming has never been done, so.
And at some point, oh, excuse me.
Uh, I believe that was a recommendation from them, or was it a requirement?
Looking at here is a requirement, but I know the previous engineer bucked it, cause he's not a bridge inspector, so.
Um, neither am I, you know, that's a relatively specialized, um.
Field, yes.
I think in this report, I believe they recommended maybe even every four years, because they said it's not. Uh, in the same category as other bridges.
Yeah, typically, any bridges that are on the, um, highway systems are inspected. Every two years, some bridges are every four, if they're relatively new, uh, others are annually, if they have a identified issue or. Uh, have particular susceptibility to scour, or in this case, uh. Being a fracture critical bridge, it should be inspected annually if it was used on a highway system. Pedestrian system is a, you know, whole different realm that, that we don't typically get involved in, but. I can, I can do a little research on that and see what's considered appropriate.
Willane, do we have any insurance on the bridge?
Liability insurance, we don't have any property. But, um, I have a question, uh, from different things that I've read, uh, prior engineer had. I talked to secondary roads, um, they can't find it down there.
So I had to get hold of Jeff and find out where it was at.
I can do that.
Cause I know, I know he did it, cause he didn't want nothing to do with the bridge, so. So he hadn't inspected.
And, and the way I read this, Brad, is it said that the county, the, the engineer of our county should inspect it, not as a, an official. Inspection, but as a. Looking at it to making sure that it's adequate, but it didn't sound like it was a official inspection, it was just, somebody needs to look at it once in a while.
Well, I think there. Any engineer that would, uh.
Yes.
Evaluating the bridge would be taking on some responsibility.
Exactly.
Um, given the, given the items from, uh, two thousand six that Rod Vance from Calhoun Burns pointed out as being. Uh, problematic, um. I would have some significant concerns about getting involved with that, um. Here again, um, we deal with highway issues.
Yes.
So not necessarily familiar with what pedestrian loads would be, but, um. You know, I guess we can, I just quickly skin, scan through Rod Vance's, uh. Report from two thousand six and the letters that came in two thousand seven regarding insurance and. Having an engineer take a look at it, but, um, if you're having somebody inspected, it really should be someone that's either a bridge inspector. Inspector or a structural engineer familiar with that type of structure.
And it wouldn't hurt to have an update on what that would cost, just so we, we know that.
I think if I can add one thing, inspections that they're talking about, it's the same type of inspection that the Safety Committee does when they go to. Other buildings that the county owns, um, thing that you're looking at is, is the fencing still up? Is it secured, is the decking still in place, is there any apparent damage or the gate still working? That kind of thing, not as Brad mentioned, an official bridge inspection.
Right, not. Not doing the structural ter- integrity, just.
And the, the purpose of that is you document, you have it every, done every month. So if there is some incident that occurs, you've got a defenseful position on your face that, you know, we were doing our due diligence. We were checking everything once a month, here's our checklist, report, whatever, so you have a starting point. And it's the same thing that, you know, they, that we want the Safety Committee to be doing on all of our other locations.
And that was a request from the insurance company, correct? Yeah.
It also works for the insurance company as well.
Yeah, okay. So we could continue to think that through in terms of how we want to work, make that happen, so.
So the Safety Committee should actually be doing this, not the engineer.
And we can arrange that.
Or should it be the engineer or his delegate?
I would say probably somebody from secondary roads, only because that's what it said in two thousand six, but I have no idea what it was said in.
Yeah, and it not being a part of the secondary road system, it's, it's actually somewhat. At least in part in the, in the city limits. It's not, doesn't fall under the umbrella of secondary roads.
Just a county-owned bridge.
Yeah, yep, that is correct.
And even as you look at other structures, some are fairly new, like the High Tressel Bridge, they have accidents happen on that one even. So I think we've tried to keep this in a very safe condition, as we've worked on it and kept it repaired. So we, we've worked to be sure it is. That's the best thing we can do.
I think we answered most of the list here, you know, insurance on the new parts liability, we told you it's okay to paint already. That we can't do anything with the access, cause that's the city, placing a new light system, that's up to you guys if you want to do that. Let's go, I've put in a call with them, haven't heard back, whether they can do internet for the cameras. And the only other thing we've got to put on the agenda is. To take over the electric bill. Not covered.
The original electric, when we first got the bridge, was, there was a meter there and.
The county paid it.
Think the county paid it. Anyway, the Trails Council never did pay through the years.
And then what happened?
When the fire happened, it burned the pole, and we, we paid for the new pole to be put in. And for the alliance to install a new pole, somebody had, you know, we had to be billed. So they started billing us for the usage. But that was not something that was earned and done.
Okay.
So I would think what we'd want to do probably is, next time we meet, put it back on the agenda for a resolution that would include those things that we agree to.
I don't know, we have to have a resolution, she, there's nothing, they can do anything on the rest, it's just the paying the bill.
And, and that's okay with me, if that's what everybody.
I wouldn't think we need a resolution to paint it. Right, just.
It'd be appropriate, yeah. Yeah.
Alright. Uh, personnel. Payroll request for New Ohio Part-Time Correctional Officer.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any other business, we have a third quarter report from the sheriff. Need a motion for that?
I'll move, oh, I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's Investment Report, March twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And just a reminder, before we adjourn, Friday is Chief Waplo at the museum. And he'll be present, and just, so my son's listening, if he's listening, he's not the real Chief Waplo. He is, he is dead. But there will be an impersonator there acting as Chief Waplo. And then on Saturday at the Methodist Church and Agency, they're having a dinner and fundraiser for the, for the gravesite, so. Celebrating Chief Waplo. And thank you to secondary roads for grading the road out there in front, so they can treat it before the celebration. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everybody.